All set?
Okay.
Good. Okay, good morning. We have a small crowd, but we'll do it anyway. We have video. I'm Peter Grunell, General Manager of the San Mateo County Harbor District. With me this morning is Harbor Commissioner Scott Grindi and from our engineering consulting firm, Marcia Medina. Emily Cooper of our staff is with us too. And the purpose of this meeting this morning is to update the public on the status of the project which we call the West Trail or the Mavericks Trail. For those of you looking at the video who may not be at the lake or here at Pillar Point Harbor, Highway One, Hapo Base, south. Here's the trail out to Pillar Point. The maverick surf rate is roughly a half mile off that way. It's the Air Force Station. So, we are concerned with this area. The trail is a public trail. It is in need of repairs and improvements. There's a small area which you can see on this thing if you were up close, partway out on the trail, that is severely deteriorated. There's an old culvert there. And in consultation with the Coastal Commission, our permit authority, we've agreed that we will be able to do some really urgently needed repairs on that section. Details are over here. I notice some of you have already taken a look at that. If the camera can pick up on that, that'll help. So, that's Phase One of the project. And last Wednesday, the Harbor Commission authorized staff to issue a public bid notice. We'll be putting that together with our engineers, GHD, shortly. And issuing that, we'll get bids, bring that back to the Harbor Commission for a selection of lowest responsible bidder, and then set to work on those immediate repairs. Concurrently with that, we will be doing the preparation of a second permit application for Phase Two of the project. And that is the full alignment of the trail all the way out to the point. There are three parts to that. One is the actual trail. Surface itself needs to be improved. Our plan is to do that without paving it, but still making it available for wheelchair riders, fully ADA compliant. We'll be seeking some grant money to help defray some of that cost. Then, secondly, we will be replacing the portable toilets that we have out there now with a full proper ADA compliant restroom facility at the edge of the trail near the vehicle parking lot. We should be able to get some grant funding for that component as well. And then, thirdly, the vehicle parking lot itself needs to be improved, and we'll be doing that. We will not pave that either. We don't need to. There's plenty of environmentally more sensitive, but fully usable surfaces that don't require macadam or other paving materials. So, that will be Phase Two, and I would anticipate that we'd be seeking permit applications for that approval during the winter, next spring. There are several things that need to be sorted out, exactly what surface treatment we will end up using on the trail, similarly the parking lot, precisely what kind of restroom facility we will be using. There are issues of infrastructure connections, design issues, and so on. The attempt will also be to minimize and avoid, if at all possible, any kind of armor and treatment along the embankment and so on. But again, that's something we'll need to work out with the permit authorities as well with that. So, that's the overview of the project. In terms of funding, GHD last year had prepared a condition survey, an onsite condition survey, and based on that, we had preliminary cost estimates for the project, not including the parking lot and the restroom. We're looking at somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. It remains to be seen how much it's really going to cost. This Phase One repair now is estimated to be roughly $150,000, $55,000. Again, when we get the bids, we'll know really what we're dealing with. So, that is the situation. We do have money budgeted now at the $365,000 level, and that includes this first phase. So, as we proceed during next year's budget preparation, we will update the estimates. So, that's really where we're at with this in terms of purpose, design, cost estimate, timing. Questions?
What is the design for Phase One?
It's right up there. And I can have Marcia give a quick rundown on that if you would.
Sure. Absolutely. Essentially, what we have there existing is there's a C and E pipe coming down the hill, and so that can be a lot of water down from this area above the hillside. And essentially, there's a depressed area over here with that water ponds, and then it infiltrates down here. And it comes through two existing pipes. So, there's a 12-inch pipe that you can see here, quarter mill pipe, and there's an 18-inch reinforced concrete pipe here. And so, what's happened over time, we believe, is that between the tide coming up into these pipes, it's essentially worked at the gaskets, and it's washed some rocks up into the pipe, which reduces the capacity of the pipe, and so that's made the concrete even worse. So, there's water that's coming out of the pipe joints, and that's what causes erosion. So, what we're proposing to do is install a manhole here with a grated lid, so the water will come down in here, and we have riprap protection around, so we won't get scouring there. Replace those two existing pipes coming across the trail with a 36-inch reinforced concrete pipe. Construct a wall at the end, and that will protect from this issue happening again. Also, put riprap down at the end, and that will prevent against scour at the outfall when a lot of water flowing through the pipe. And then, really most importantly, is to put an inline check valve in here. It's essentially rubber similar to a tire, and it has a flap. And so, the water coming through, the flap will open. However, if the tide's coming up higher, it will be closed, so it won't allow any water or rocks or anything to backflow into the pipe. So, we're looking to basically mitigate against the same conditions we've already seen out there by offering this solution.
What happens if there's a lot of rain happening at the same time, there's a tide, high tide, so then where will the runoff go?
Um, the same place it's going presently. So, there's actually, there's a lot of area up here where it does-
It can just hold it?
It can't just hold it like it does now.
So, the retaining wall and the riprap is really just like a headwall for this culvert? It's not-
Correct.
...a section of it?
Yeah, we try to make it as small as possible, but also, you know, to serve its purpose as a place where we can tie in to minimize any sort of re contouring that we need to do. Because we could make it shorter, but then, you know, we'd be intruding where there, we want to minimize that impact as soon as possible.
Where does the water go to the grated manhole that you, at the end of that line there? Where does the, the water that drains down into there, where does that water go?
Uh, what will happen is it will go through this 36-inch pipe under the trail, and it will oblate essentially.
But how's it going to go back up? Is there a pump or something in there that's going to pump it back up?
No. So, the water's coming down here, across, and then out to the beach.
Oh, okay. I was thinking the left-hand side was the ocean.
No, sorry, this is, this is-
It's too big.
Yeah, it's the way you got it drawn, so I turned around. Never mind. Thank you.
So, is it, so then, as I understand it, the $300,000 figure, as I understood it anyway, was for a longer segment of armoring, and now this-
No, no armor.
-150,000 is for this shorter section?
No. You're correct. The $150,000 roughly figure is an estimate for Phase One.
Well, I mean, Phase One is shrunk from the report that was turned in in 2012. It's a smaller than most. So, I just want to clarify-
All right, let me, let me back up a little. The condition survey looked at the entire alignment. Based on that, there was a first very rough estimate, and that's the $360,000 level for the trail itself, not the restroom, not the parking lot. Then, further detailed engineering work was done, leading to identifying this one area for Phase One. Okay, that needs to be dealt with right now. Otherwise, we're going to have to close the trail down. And so, we got the Coastal Commission to agree to segment the project. They don't really do that, but in the interest of keeping public access, they said, "Fine, do it this way as long as you continue to work on a permit application for the whole thing." Okay.
Yeah, I just, I had an information gap there, because I had seen the report for control, I believe it was, which described the three proposals, I believe they were all armor. And we had, I think we got them for the question, but I hadn't seen any of the follow-up reports. So, this is news, and this sounds good, but it's, you know, it's totally surprise.
Yeah, this is now the follow-up.
All right. Well, are the, is your, the report available, this most recent one? Because I'm interested in the details.
If you are, we can make available the bid package. That'll have all the details.
That is, is their report on this, this-
We will be going out to bid to do these repairs. There will be documents going to prospective bidders, construction firms. I took all the documents.
Do you think it's available? Would it be interesting to me?
Well, fine. That's why we had him sign in. I can keep in touch with you.
Okay.
Yeah. That, I think, speak to Marcia if you're looking for her, because that will have full details. And again, the coastal permit, which we're expecting very shortly. We have three or four more questions that were in the process of-
Oh, yeah, that would be good too.
Hmm? Yes. So, again, that would be, that permit is being given for these repairs, and there is documentation for that, so we can get all that to you.
Okay.
Yes.
There's some discussion in here about other permits and the-
Yes.
-Army Corps of Engineers, which seems to be a little dysfunctional. Do you require permits from them to do this?
Let me run it down. Yes, it's a good question. The, the whole permit picture is as follows. Coastal Commission, Army Corps of Engineers Regulatory Branch, Regional Water Quality Control Board, and State Lands Commission are the agencies to whom we have made contact. Working backwards, there was recent legislation passed into law that provides that agencies like this harbor district, which is operating this harbor under a state Tidelands grant that was awarded by the state legislature in 1960, in the past would have to get a lease from the State Lands Commission, because the State Lands Commission is concerned that there may be certain resources, be it minerals or whatever, that belong to the people of California, and they have regulatory administrative power over that, and so they would want to make sure that that's covered. The new law says for projects of this kind, once you provide the necessary information on the project to the State Lands Commission, they can determine that we do not need to get a lease. That saves us roughly $4,000. And so, in this case, for this project, we do not need to get a lease from State Lands. We are getting our Regional Water Board certification. We've already provided the fee for that. That's coming. Army Corps of Engineers is concerned because the Corps under federal law is responsible for what are called the waters of the United States, which includes this area. And so, for projects of this kind, the Corps wants to make sure that we're not either causing environmental issues or interfering with navigation. So, we will be getting a permit from the Corps of Engineers momentarily, and then lastly, the Coastal Commission, as I've said.
So, it indicates here that the Corps has had a lot of problems with their staffing. So, you're going to get a permit though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would, we would not actually be able to start construction until we have a permit. The latest information we have from the Army Corps and the Coastal Commission is that permits are going to be coming shortly. And so, given that information, we decided that we could start the, well, getting the authorization to go to bid. It's going to take a while to go through that bidding process, and so we anticipate that about the time the Harbor Commission will choose a lowest responsible bidder to do the job, we will have our permits.
And how long will you make the construction open?
How long for-
The construction.
The construction?
Yeah.
Have a little question for that.
Once they get out there, probably not more than a couple weeks, I'd imagine.
Really?
Should be pretty quick for them to get out there.
For Phase One.
Will the trail, oh, excuse me, would the trail be closed for the full two weeks or shorter window for the closure?
The documentation we put together is requested with a contractor to maintain access during construction.
Any other questions?
So, the resurfacing for this, just where the culvert is, will be need to match the, what's existing there now?
Yeah. Yeah, and then any other improvements later on will cover the whole thing at that stage, whatever that turns out to be.
Well, I just wanted to say I'm greatly relieved, and this looks very good. Thank you.
Well, we talked a long time ago, and we did agree in principle about how we wanted it received, is what we're doing. So, we try. Here we are. If there aren't any more questions, talk.
I have a question. Since Fitzgerald has become a state marine reserve, there are a lot of restrictions on what people can do down there. A lot of schools are now going out to Pillar Point. And so, the parking lot, I assume is where a lot of the buses park?
Yes.
And is that going to, are you taking that into consideration when, you know, for the revisions, parking lot?
Oh, yes, very definitely. Sure. No, it's, it's, we're well aware, this is a very well-used facility, and in fact-
Abused.
Well, abused.
It's abused.
Not used, abused.
Yes, it's used and abused, yes. It'd be quite so. And so, yeah, it'll be an interesting design problem to identify a surfacing that isn't, you know, concrete or paving, but will hold up to heavy use, but, but still be environmentally more sensitive than paving. And that's, that's one of the things that we will be working on through the winter and into the spring, so that once we've determined that, then we can do two things. We can filter that into the second permit applications and into the grant applications, because we'll look for funding to try to offset some of those costs.
Well, as I'm sure you know, the county has a gnawson look at surfacing with parking lots in connection with Fitzgerald parking lot and the trail and all that stuff. So, you've got a lot of wrestling there.
Well, actually, I mean, we, with the GHD, will be going through all of that kind of stuff to get it all together. And as far as, as, you know, keeping the public informed, as we go through this process, we will have more updates, either in this kind of a format or at board meetings or otherwise, so people can be kept informed and comment and make suggestions. I would anticipate that before the Harbor Commission decides on a final treatment, say for the parking lot surface, we might want to present some alternatives to the commission and the public and say, "Okay, here are some alternatives," because there's a certain aesthetic component as well. I mean, there's aesthetics, there's cost, there's, you know, maintenance and all of that, and we can look and see what really turns out to be the best approach.
Do you anticipate enlarging that parking lot?
Anticipate?
Enlarging the parking lot?
Enlarging the parking lot? We haven't talked about that yet. We can look at it as a possibility.
I was just curious if that was part of the plan.
Yeah. We don't know yet. Since you raised it now, we'll put it on our checklist of, well, might we be able to? And if so, would we want to?
Well, see, because it's such an abused area as far as the marine life is concerned, I would vote for, would you see us-
Yeah, well, there's no question, yeah.
That's just my personal.
Well, that's part of, that's part of the design issue because of the habitat along the edge, and for example, drainage, big deal. Same thing. We want to make sure, in fact, you know, our permits will require us to address that kind of issue.
There is an auxiliary parking lot farther down Pillar Point to Rad West.
Oh, Rad West, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's not our jurisdiction.
That's not yours?
No.
Who's that, the county?
That's county, yeah.
The other thing that I want to mention is that there is a lot of concern by several organizations about the abuse of marine life down there. And when you're doing all this renovation of parking lot, I think there are some of these entities which would really like to talk about appropriate signage to inform the public about what can and can't be done down there.
That's a good suggestion. Yes, indeed.
While, while you're doing all this.
Yeah, work in progress.
And, and, you know, as you know, the California Academy of Sciences had this proposal to do an educational program down there, which was really designed to stop some of this abuse. And so, you know, you should be talking to those other entities.
Yeah, we'll be doing that, yes indeed.
I would recommend, don't even bother trying to enlarge the parking lot. It is, because of the environmental constraints. I was going to ask, leave, I would encourage you to work, reach out to county parks and coordinate those two parking lots. For example, you might have a bus drop-off place where the buses don't even come into your lot, and they drop off there, and then they go park at the overflow lot. I think they may do that already, but you could formalize the procedure and not even have them come in the lot, just, you know, turn around and then go park. And so, you know, I would just say, work with them from the beginning. Let's, how can we coordinate the best arrangement for parking for this destination? Because their lot is for the same destination, and-
Now, that's a good, that's a good suggestion.
In the whole big picture and over the long term, you know, the county parks has a long time had a great interest in this area, and even, you know, I think when David Holland was around, he, he spoke about, you know, taking that over possibly or some kind of arrangement, and then they went to the trouble to put in that auxiliary lot. And so, whatever the future may hold, I'd just think it'd be good now to just start working with them on this, particularly in this area of this trail. I hear this lot in the community asking, you know, if county parks could, did I say state parks, but county parks could take over this area? But short of that, you know, just work with them. I encourage that.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. That's the, the lot was, be considered to be serving that component of the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. Pillar Point Marsh is, is part of that whole county-operated reserve, and that, that lot supposedly is going to serve people coming to the marsh, and so we would need to talk to the county folks at the county parks to see how that works. It's definitely something to, to consider for sure. Anything else?
Yeah, one other thing that has to do with the parking, because I've done it myself. When the parking lots are full, people do park in the community, and then usually access by just walking, if it's low tide, by walking down.
On the beach, yeah.
So, that's something else to think about in terms of the overall parking issue. So, if you're going to improve this and make it much more accessible and more attractive.
Yeah, well, that, that speaks again to the question of signage and educating the public about, you know, what are the ways of accessing this trail or these facilities? And that's something definitely to work on. There could be some kind of an outreach effort or program or whatever to, to-
Maybe have Don Horstley as, you know, Princeton planner or whatever.
Yeah. Well, it's interesting. You know, I, I'm on the steering committee for that, and both in the steering committee and then I've attended all the meetings, and there was one, of course, the other night. And they haven't seemed to get into that level of detail yet, but what you're raising is, I think is a very good point, and it's certainly something that we would want to work with Supervisor Horstley's office, county parks, and whoever else we would need to talk with to, you know, coordinate and make the best use of all of these facilities for the public.
Well, we have similar issue with Fitzgerald, because, I mean, today our parking lot's going to be all flooded, and people just park out in the community.
Yes.
Some problems.
Yeah. No, but those are, those are good points you're raising, definitely. Anything else?
When you're working on the signage and whatever interpretive materials to protect the reef and, and the other resources there, I would encourage you to educate the public about the dog issue, that, you know, this is, this really enforced leash requirement and cleaning up. It's, it's a, I think, I don't think people realize, when their dogs chase birds off the beach, they think, "Oh, well, the bird, lazy old bird, they could just fly over somewhere else." I think people think those birds live there all the time, but in actual fact, you're coming through on an exhausting journey, and this is a critical rest and feeding opportunity, and that may be just the last straw that time the dog chased the bird off this place. So, signage, explain, educating the public about this.
That's a good point. Signage at a minimum is there, but I've been thinking, this is an interesting situation because there's another context which has nothing to do with this, but it's related in terms of educating the public. You may have heard about the Resource Conservation District's study of fecal contamination in the harbor. A big study came out, and they've identified where this stuff is coming from. It's upstream, it's on the land, flowing down through a couple of places into the harbor. And the Resource Conservation District, which has got minimal resources, is still trying to work to educate property owners and citizens in that whole El Granada of Princeton area about- area, about looking after their animals and whatever else they can do to reduce, if not eliminate, that kind of stuff. This is another aspect of the same kind of problem. And what it says to me, I mean, kind of talking to county, I can see that the Harbor District could take an initiative to talk to various agencies, you know, county health, Granada Sanitary District, or what is now the Community Services District, and others to maybe get some kind of a joint educational effort going on with all this kind of stuff, you know, household pets and whatever it is.
It's just that, as we said starting out, this is a heavily used trail.
Yes.
And so this is a prime place to educate the public. Because the people come there with their dogs and what better place to explain that issue?
Well, I'll tell you how we're going to deal with the signage issue. When we go to the Coastal Conservancy for an access grant, we will include signage and interpretive information. I helped design that program when I worked at Coastal Conservancy, I know what it is. And they provide grant funds for that kind of thing, very definitely. And it's perfect as a part of, in other words, not just fixing the service, but this as a necessary.
Yeah, it's not just a matter of, you know, clean up your poop, but explaining why this is important and it is an area-wide issue and only in areas and, because dog people, they take their dog home and it would be good if they understood that for their own yard as well.
Well, I can, yeah, see, I can see signage as being one obvious immediate thing that you put on site, but there can be other aspects of an educational program. I don't know, public service announcements, you know, certainly things on our website and other things.
Just want to think also, just to jump in, on the educational side, is it talking with RCD and other groups that we might be able to come up with some kind of a joint, I'm going to call it teacher packet? Because like when you have the students come out, especially younger students, they could have a packet, the teacher that could come off the web, print it up, so there's training before they get there.
I have a question about that. I was unaware that you, does the Harbor District know when school groups are coming to Pillar Point?
Not to that level of urgency, no. That's just a local access point.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
That's what I'm saying, is that we could have something, we could advertise that in the signage, so we can also make it work. We get a lot of phone calls from school districts. And what they do is they call up and say, you know, is there parking there or blah, blah, blah? Or can we come to the harbor afterwards? Or, you know, where's a good place to have 30 or 60 kids come for lunch after? And so, you know, there's that kind of a link, but a lot of times it's not a link that is much more that we're just looking, we have a good date or anything like that.
But what we're hearing, this is good input, we really appreciate it, because what it says is, the whole project, clearly want to involve more than just the physical repairs and improvements, but a real outreach effort to these school districts and other locations.
And like Tom said earlier, you know, the Cal Academy for several years now has talked about wanting to get an educational program at Pillar Point. And it's, it's not easy to do that and, you know, but they are still interested in doing that. What they would like to have are volunteers down to, on busy weekends in particular, but, you know, school weeks also for the field trips that arrive there unannounced. But especially on the weekends and especially the minus tide periods of time. And they would like to have volunteers there just to advise people, you know, what their impact is and what they should and shouldn't be doing, even though there are no restrictions there. Whereas with Fitzgerald, we have restrictions now because we're an MPA, but prior to us becoming an MPA, there weren't really many restrictions on the intertidal line as much as it was fishing restrictions. So now we are under much tighter control about what we can do with those school groups that come to Fitzgerald. So Pillar Point is just, you know, a free-for-all. And it's, it's so upsetting to us who care so much. I mean, we are obviously very passionate about it because we've been volunteers for a really long time at Fitzgerald. But any outreach to the groups that arrive, you know, I wish DFW had more staffing, that they could be at Pillar Point to help with enforcement and, you know, trying to let people know they should be out there ripping sea stars.
For the last year, there's been different educational groups that I've talked with and there's been a kind of roundtable casual discussion saying it'd be really nice to have almost like a small utility trailer with the visitor office on it.
Oh.
So that they could tow it to locations, because that way it's not a vandalized type situation either. Where they can take it to, you know, the Mavericks parking lot area and then possibly to a different area and the same locale if there's some other animal. But that way they can have all the groceries and everything else for the kids or adults or.
Yeah, we were also kind of different educational, we've been talking with the community college districts in the county skyline in particular, about working together on a variety of things. And it comes to mind that there may be a real opportunity, you talk about volunteers and so on, there could be some kind of a piece of a, part of the educational curriculum or something where those students can actually have some field experience doing certain kinds of things that might fit in there. Obviously it takes planning and looking at, but what we're hearing, I mean, this is good stuff and it sounds like, you know, a real integral part of what simply starts as a repair project can be something where it's much more, longer lasting and have benefits so that in the end it costs the public less money to keep their facilities.
The other thing, at the trail head is the perfect place because it's a gate, basically. And if you could, we've done this at Fitzgerald where we, on real heavy weekends, we've had reader program where we stop people before they actually get down there to at least tell them a little bit about, you know, how to behave. And the other thing is, is that if you've been to Fitzgerald recently, you know that they have installed some really neat audio vision equipment in the visitor center, which has a continuous loop of video that was done by Rob Callow, one of the rangers down there, about welcome to Fitzgerald and, you know, what you should do and what you shouldn't do. And it runs continuously, so the public actually sees this video. If you're, if you're going to do some construction there, you ought to include something like a kiosk or something like that. It could be man, man also is an information. And use some of these techniques that are really just coming into vogue now to use to educate the public.
Yeah, one of the things, not to say it can't be that, because there's solar and everything else, one of the problems we have with this location is.
Have your tubes out there.
Really, you know, there is no sewer out there, there is no water out there, there is no power out there. So it's, you know, when we look at our restroom, it may be a vaulted restroom where it has to be pumped out once a month or something just because of no sewer out there.
An extension cord up to the.
Yeah. But it's that kind of thing, looking at alternate energy sources too, just to make things like your parking.
I don't know, I really like your idea of having a mobile.
It's, it has a lot of positives.
Like a mobile kiosk, actually.
Right.
I mean, I think that's a fact.
It's a simpler way and it also keeps it to where it can be stocked and stored and used in multiple places.
Absolutely. I think it's great. Good luck.
No, it's an entity that's obviously interested in the, in this stuff.
Yeah, the Gulf of the Farallons, National Marine Sanctuary Association, Cal Academy, I mean, there are a lot of, yeah, a lot of entities that would be very useful and helpful probably in trying to establish something like that.
And right now we have probably 10 to 12 universities and a couple of school districts that aren't even from this area. They come in from virtually in other places just to be a pillar and then they go either north or south of the pillar to do whatever they're going to do.
Yeah, we get groups at Fitzgerald from Nevada and, you know, like Tahoe and.
Yeah, we had a sergeant group last year, it was college teachers that were around, about 30 of them just researching the local area.
There's more, as I said earlier, there's more restrictions placed on access to Fitzgerald's facilities. It just adds to the problems.
And it shows that the local.
Yeah, it's sort of the same avenue with the MPA coming in.
Yeah, for your information, yeah, we've had a long working relationship with Gulf of the Farallons, National Marine Sanctuary. And I'm an alternate member of their advisory council.
Oh, okay.
For marine activities with, on the commercial side, for, there's a person from the commercial fishing industry who's the member and I'm her alternate. So we have that connection. More recently, Farallons spent a year working with a community working group of local citizens, including fishermen and other folks, you know, from Happy Bay and around, to consider a visitor center, a sanctuary visitor center, San Mateo Coast Visitor Center. And they first figured out what that might be, what it would do, what kind of programs and so on. Then they started considering locations, they looked at half a dozen locations and they ended up solidly saying, really ought to be in Pillar Point Harbor. So they approached us and we said, well, that's fine, we'd love to have you. And so there's an understanding now. Nothing's been signed, but there's an understanding that as the Harbor District looks at improvements to Pillar Point Harbor, building in a place for a sanctuary visitor center with its exhibits, its programs, its outreach and so on. So that's something that's going to come.
Yeah.
Basically what they said was, they need, you know, a modest space, you know, obviously all the necessary access facilities and so on. They can't build their own, but they can rent space. Well, we have plans to do certain things so we can fold them in. And they can be, as you suggest, another of the entities with whom we can be working on this kind of stuff.
And that'd be great.
Yeah, it's coming. It'll take a while, but it'll.
Everything is slow. Nothing's fast.
Just got to keep working on it. Anything else? If not, thank you. It's been very helpful, a lot of good suggestions and points to keep in mind. As we said, we'll keep you posted. We're working with PCTV to get the word out through their means and we'll have more updates as things go. Looking ahead, in the near term, we will be, you know, getting bids in and getting our permits and starting on the first phase. But I can say, we can start working right now on this whole business of education and outreach and so on. That can start right away. The suggestions about having things out there even at the construction time, that's excellent, by you, that kind of thing, and we can go on from there. And we'll be keeping the public up to date as we go. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.